Welcome to Minnesick Valley Board of Education Regular Meeting for Thursday, June 5th, 2025. We do have a call. Will everybody please rise and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is going to the Board of Education. Take the minutes.
Thank you.
May 21st.
I think this is two of them there.
Be resolved that the Board of Education, on the recommendation of the Superintendent, approves events of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of May 21st, 2025. Right motion.
So moved, Bill Cooper.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? motion carried. We'll open the welcome, walk through the visitors portion and um, just want to remind the people at speak, you have four minutes to speak as per board policy and Rick DiPaolo.
Hey, everybody. My name's Rick DiPaolo. Uh, I've lived here forty-eight years of my life. Um, basically why I'm here tonight is I was hoping to encourage the board to maybe form some type of exploratory committee on the betterment of our fields, our athletic fields. Basically, maybe not so much the football field area, but the soccer field area and the pit field area. Um, I have dorms across. We've, I, we've been involved in sports our, pretty much our whole lives here. And those fields are atrocious. You, we have highly, our fall sports are highly competitive throughout the section. We have, our girls' lacrosse team is in the state semifinals or almost the state quarterfinals this weekend. And we're practicing in the gym until April. We didn't even out, have an outdoor practice until April, before our first actual game, we didn't even have an outdoor practice. You're not going to get better, you're not going to compete in those situations. Now, the board has an opportunity before it now with that Amazon warehouse coming in. Whether you like it, dislike it, think it's great, think it's bad, we should be pressuring that, the town of Wayondah and Amazon to supply the funds to upgrade these fields. We could upgrade the AC units in the school. We could buy those buses. We could do things like that using Amazon's funds. When CPV came here, I'm almost positive they offered to build us a football field. We turned it down. And, and that's my understanding. They, there was, there was money there that could have been had, and we didn't take it. Well, the signs of times, we need to start leveraging these big projects that are coming into the Minnesick Valley School District to get some of these things done around here that the board doesn't feel is going to get done through the budget. Now, with the athletic field stuff, we need to come into 2025 and build some good facilities. Goshen, Legoland comes in, brand new football stadium. That's not a coincidence. Those things are tied together. And this board should be, that's why I say, some type of committee to look at the options to have those things happen. Um, that's pretty much my spiel, I guess you would say about this stuff. I, I, I really, again, put a committee together, see what we can do. Like, we, the, this budget that we put out every year, if it gets voted down, the first thing we do as a board is go to cut sports, modified sports, these sports. And the reason you do that is because you know that then the sports parents will come out and they will vote, because they don't want that to happen. So, why not help those sport parents with actually improving some of the fields at Minnesota? Thank you.
Thanks, guys. We'll close that portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Monaco.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Uh, first, we have the approval of code of conduct. Uh, from six to six-thirty today, we had our code of conduct hearing. And as I mentioned there, at the start of the hearing, our code of conduct has been reviewed by our attorneys, by our administrators. Uh, we've gone through everything. We've added in the necessary language for any of the updates from this year's, uh, New York State budget. With that, be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent, having held the hearing of the code of conduct on June 5th, 2025, hereby adopts the code of conduct for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second. Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, I have a motion for the Rick to negotiate our, our DPAs. These are our agreements for the head-to-the-law. So with that, uh, I'd ask for a motion to approve the Minnesick Valley Board of Education grants to the ROC and its designated attorneys the authority to negotiate the terms and conditions of the DPAs and take such actions sus, so as to effectuate, uh, the purposes of intent of this resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion?
Just a big thank you to Steve Caldwell, who manages all of this for us. He does a great job getting all the DPAs in place and then working with the Rick and making sure we are head-to-the-law compliant. It is a tremendous amount of work to do this, so a big thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, disposal of vote, uh, voting records. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation by the superintendent approves the disposal of the following records as per the New York State retention disposition schedule for local government records, LGS1 schedule, May 21st, 2024. Ballots, voted, spoiled, rejected ballots, three boxes total. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Patty Reynolds.
Second, Anthony Monaco. Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Human Resources with Mr. G. The other.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. We have a motion to approve the resignations, position creations, and appointments as listed.
So moved, Kathy DeRoe. Second.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the clinical instruction portion with Mr. Renato.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Tonight, we have a resolution for the board to consider, uh, to, uh, put in place our school resource officers for the summer school program. So the resolution says be resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the summer term addendum to agreement for the provision of deputy sheriffs as school security officers assigned to the Minnesick Valley Central School District for the summer term for 2025 and authorize the board present to execute such agreement.
So moved, Joe Cane.
Second, Scott Hines.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
I, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I got a little alarmed. Correct. Mr. Renato, I don't know if this is actually the right question to ask right now. Um, I know, obviously, we need security over the summer and the deputy there. Do we have a, do we have a number or a rough idea on turnout for summer school?
Do we have a number?
Do we have a rough idea of like, number of summer schools?
So, um, at this point, they're still in the process of collecting registrations. A lot of it is dependent upon student success at the end of the school year. So we don't necessarily know yet who was going to past classes.
Okay.
Um, it looks as though at this point in time, from what they're tracking, that the numbers are roughly what they have been in the past, though.
So it's like a hundred something people, yeah?
Okay, cool. Thank you. Sorry about that. Any other questions?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Renato. Next item on the agenda is People Personnel Services with Mr. Fenton.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Good evening. Please refer to the executive summary on board docs. Committee on Preschool Special Education met on seven days in May. Thirty-five students were reviewed. I ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the Committee on Preschool Special Education as presented.
So moved, Kathy DeRoe. Second, Scott Hines.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Committee on Special Education met on one day in April and thirteen days in May. Seventy-seven students were reviewed. Ask for a motion to approve the arrangements of the recommended placements by the Committee on Special Education as presented.
So moved, Joe Cane.
Second, Anthony Monaco.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Fenton, next item on the agenda is the business portion with Mr. Witherow.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. First item we have is a bid award for athletic equipment and supplies for physical education. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent awards the athletic equipment and supplies bid for physical education for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented and attached.
So moved, Patty Reynolds.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next item is a bid award for athletic equipment and supplies for fall sports. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent awards the athletic equipment and supplies bid, fall sports for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented and attached.
So moved, Ruth Lewis.
Second, Kathy DeRoe.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next item we have is potential reserve adjustments. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent approves the following reserve maximum funding levels for the year ended June 30th, 2025 as specified below.
So moved, Ruth Lewis. Second, Scott Hines.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next item is approval of warrants. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent accepts the claims of what others report for the following warrants as attached.
So moved, Bill Cooper.
Second, Ruth Lewis.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next item we have is acceptance of the budget transfer report. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation of the superintendent acknowledges receipt of the budget transfer report for the month of May, 2025.
So moved, Patty Reynolds. Second, Ruth Lewis.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Last item is another bid award for technology, equipment, and supplies. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon a recommendation of the superintendent awards the technology, equipment, and supplies bid for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented and attached.
So moved, Ruth Lewis. Second, Vanessa White.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Witherow. Next item on the, uh, agenda of reports section, uh, Mr. Monaco.
I'll handle the first two for you, first couple for you. So first up, we have some mandated training, but I do want to note, I want to thank Ms. Yorman, because immediately following her election, she came in and met with, uh, myself, Mr. Flaherty, and Mr. Cooper, as we have done each of our years here, and made sure that we were able to answer as many of her questions as possible, reviewed the, uh, you know, the type of agendas that she'll start to see in July, in particular, the reorganization agenda, so that she had a good understanding of what would take place and available for questions. And Ms. Molnar has already started getting her adjusted for everything that she needs, including ID badge and everything. So, uh, we're well on our way getting Mrs. Yorman ready to go to be part of the Board of Education. One of the other things that needs to be done are two courses from the School Boards Association, and we have mandated training. So first up is the governance training. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the expenditure of one hundred and fifteen dollars for Mallory Yorman, newly elected board member, to participate in the mandatory training for new school board members in governance through Orange County School Boards Association. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Patty Reynolds. Second, Anthony Monaco.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Next, we have the mandated training for fiscal oversight fundamentals. Be resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the expenditure of one hundred and forty dollars for Mallory Yorman, newly elected board member, to participate in mandatory training for new school board members in fiscal oversight fundamentals through New York State School Boards Association. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Joe Cane.
Second.
Go ahead.
Vanessa White.
Vanessa White. Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
And we have another training, and we're always glad when our board members select to do additional training through NISBA. So we have an approval of a leadership in education event. So be it resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the expenditure of up to seven hundred dollars for board member Ruth A. Lewis attending the 2025 NISBA Leadership in Education Event from August 1st to August 2nd, 2025. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education upon recommendation superintendent approves the reimbursement of district established conference travel mileage cost. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Patty Reynolds. Second, Anthony Monaco.
Motion made and second. Is there any discussion? Being that there's none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I abstained. I'm not voting for myself.
Okay. You don't have to. You don't have to, but that's okay. Well, um, motion carried.
Next item on the agenda is the Oxba Report. Um, myself, Mr. Monaco, and Mr., um, Monahan attended the Oxba, uh, it's the annual dinner and meeting, uh, Sir Cosmos, and, um, the guest speaker, what, were, um, were, uh, several students from districts around Orange County that are actually the, um, the, um, school board members, the student school board members. Um, some students have been doing this for a number of years, and, um, it was very enlightening as to, to get the, um, student perspective of all this. Uh, and although the kids were very, very different, their, 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 their reading perspective was very, very similar. So, uh, uh, it was, it was, it was, uh, it, it, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be a different twist to the school board. Um, I think it's going to enhance us. It's going to be, you know, it's going to be able, uh, just to, us to get a, uh, just a different point of view at times. And I, I think that'll be helpful in focusing our, uh, what we do, uh, and being able to reach more students and be, you know, and actually, it was one, it was one thing one of the students said. They go, "They all look mean, but they're really not mean." Um, so it was, so that was pretty funny. Uh, and, uh, but, you know, that must be, that obviously is pers, our perspective of the students that, that were mean, but were not. Um, but, you know, once, once they got used to dealing with board members, they said they were, they were wel, they were welcomed, they were treated well, and they learned a lot. Um, Mr. Monaco, anything to add?
Um, yeah, I, again, I always, I wish I could attend more of the Oxba stuff. Um, it's, it's hard, but, uh, it's always a welcoming group. Um, I've met so many amazing people, um, there. And again, our guest speaker, um, from, uh, NISBA, um, what's his name?
Dr. Longham.
Yeah, he always gives such a key, like, his keynotes are awesome. Um, he enlightens us. It's exciting. He calls our school, our, our, you know, our, uh, our student, school board members, we're calling them scholars. Um, is, is that correct, what he was saying yesterday, scholars?
Pastor, Pastor Williams, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pastor Williams said that.
Yeah.
Uh, from Middletown, our, our president over there. But no, it's, it's really a great event to hear. I'm super excited. I, I caught one or two of the, um, the, the kids yesterday after the meeting. Mr. Monaco, I think you, you were there too, Mr. Flaherty? Just asking them some questions. Um, and they were enlightening us on the process that each school district does. Uh, we're also excited, I believe, Oxba or NISBA is going to be trying to give us, like, some guidelines and some training for those kids as well. So I think that'll be awesome, kind of like, uh, Mallory will be going to her trainings. I don't know what they'll be putting in place, um, for that, but that, that was, uh, that was great as well. And, um, I will, you know, I'll put this out there as well that, uh, they did a nice thank you to, to Mr. Flaherty for all his service. All those years, uh, he's been with Oxba and of course, as well as Minnesick. Um, and I, I wanted to thank him, you know, at this point too, I wanted to thank Mr. Flaherty for all his guidance, all these years. You know, he brought me in, I was fresh off the street. Um, and him and Mr. Cooper brought me in, and, and they've, they've, uh, tutored me along my way here and, and trying to make me the best board member I can be. So I wanted to thank you, Joe. I know they thanked you, but I wanted to thank you personally.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Not a problem.
Mr. Monahan?
Uh, just, it was, uh, it was, it was very nice to hear the perspective of, of the students. And what I would share with the board is, all of the interviews with students were conducted today. And according to Mr. Howe, we are going to be in very good hands with whoever we select out of the group. It was a very articulate, uh, group of students. And Mr. Howe said that the committee is going to have some very tough decisions to make with whom they select for these positions, that the students did an outstanding job. Uh, and he was thoroughly impressed, as was the entire committee that was part of the interview process, from their applications to how they answered the questions, how they presented themselves. Uh, we're, we're in very, very good hands with whoever the selection.
Great.
Uh, and they, they, they had to take a day to really process everything, and they're going to get back together again tomorrow and meet and make, make their decisions. They were just thoroughly impressed.
Awesome. That's wonderful.
Anything else? Next item on the agenda is district events in comment period. Um, just, so, Mr. Cooper, as usual?
Yeah, I, um, attended the Division III, um, signing ceremony, and we had, uh, twenty of our athletes going to Division III schools, um, to sign.
Is that twenty more, Mr. Cooper? Not to cut you off. Twenty more from the spring, when they do in the spring?
Correct.
So it's more?
Right.
Good.
Um, and we had one Division One, um, because, um, Anthony Tresh was not accepted to West Point until recently, so they wanted to recognize him too. So they, they put Anthony in there as the Division One recipient of, for going to West Point. Um, but it, it is amazing to see the talents of the, the, uh, the men and women that we have in our athletics, um, here at Minnesick, um, have attended all the signings for the D1, D2, and D3. And it is great, the families, the excitement, um, for this little ceremony, but it's, it's not a little ceremony, it's a big thing. Um, as Mr. Bolt was pointing out, for the D3 athletes, only eight percent of the athletes, um, from all the students across the United States actually commit to go to a D3 school to play athletics. So it's, it's very impressive. Also attended the, uh, um, academic awards ceremony last night, and, uh, it's always highlighted at the end when they, uh, announce the top twenty and to hear where all these kids are going. We have amazing kids. Uh, we have such talent here that it is absolutely amazing.
Mr. Monaco, you?
Yeah, I went to something. I went to the fifth grade Otisville trip to Legoland, because I chaperoned. And it was very nice. It was hot. The kids are, were very well behaved, very excited. It's the end of their fifth grade experience. Moving update for both elementary schools, I believe, is June 24th. And then next week on Monday, I know Otisville is going to, to take their visit to the middle school. So exciting things happening over there, but the fifth grade trip was very nice.
Um, I have a lot. Sorry, Patty. Um, so I went to Nashville with the course, and, um, I just want to say, and I know I say it all the time, Mr. Cooper just said it, we have the best kids ever here. Like, we really, really do. And I thoroughly believe it's our parents behind them, right? So they're a product of their parents. Those kids were awesome, and they had an amazing time. And Ms. Cornaccio, Estrada, I call her Ms. Cornaccio, um, is an amazing person, and those kids love her, and are, they, they're just awesome. We went to the Grand Old Opry. Not only did they go there, they performed on the front steps to the Grand Old Opry. Uh, in the chorus room, they made us a sign. I, I sent it to the board. Um, you know, welcome Minnesick Valley High School playing Grand Old Opry May 30th. It was super awesome. Uh, random people started walking up and watching the kids sing, and I thought that was like, super cool. Uh, they got to record in the same studio where Elvis, Dolly Parton, Kenny Rogers, all those guys performed, um, and they recorded a track there. They also, at the Country Music Hall of Fame, they got to meet with a producer and an artist and write a song, which I thought was, again, completely awesome. Um, we went on a, a, an amazing dinner, dinner cruise, uh, with entertainment, and the performers, again, were amazing. Um, but again, I cannot stress that our kids were absolutely perfectly behaved. Ms. Cornaccio said somebody randomly came up and said how well behaved our kids were. So that was, again, amazing. Uh, I also attended the chorus awards the other night. Again, a great, a great night, um, with, uh, with that again. And I told you a little bit about the Oxba, um, the Oxba dinner as well. And again, thank you, Mr. Flaherty, for all your years here and for your tutoring of me. And, uh, I, I believe I'm going to announce now that I would be pursuing running for Vice President of the Board of Education, um, next month. That's all I got.
I attended the coral awards ceremony the other night. Um, again, Mrs. Estrada did a wonderful job highlighting all the accomplishments of her students and the great year that they've all had together. It was very nice meeting them. I attended a couple of modified baseball games, and the, the talent we have here in our athletics is just on the table. Just read about all the teams that are going to states and it's, it's sections. It's just, it is amazing, and I'm very happy for all of them and that their parents and support their parents. Um, and that's all I got.
Listen. So I went to the, um, academic night last night as well, and, um, always inspiring to see all these, uh, amazing accomplishments that the kids do. And I think one thing that really is, um, that stands out is it's not just academics. There's music awards, there's drama awards, there's art awards, there were awards, vocational awards. And so I think it's a nice, uh, display of all of the different things that, um, our students are able to take advantage of. So, I'm very happy.
It's almost felt well round that they are.
Uh, so our middle school band and our high school band did a great job on Memorial Day. Um, we're very lucky. It was a nice, beautiful day. It was first time in like three years nobody passed out. Um, but the, both bands did excellent, and it was a fitting tribute to Mr. Warner's last time conducting them in the, uh, Union Building Memorial Day Parade. But it was, it was a great day, and, uh, very proud to see our, our bands out there playing in that parade.
And, and Audrey Quillo gave an incredible
Yes, she did.
speech as part of the actual ceremony. That was really, really wonderful.
Yeah, she was derepresented for the honor flight, and, um, yeah, did a good, she, post-speech was better than new houses.
She didn't have to leave.
Anybody else? Just, uh, quickly, any of this for the board this morning?
Uh, just one bit. Uh, be ready for Saturday, 2:00 P.M., Chinango Valley. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna do that. I'll do a couple things. So first is, uh, Chinango Valley, 2:00 P.M., girls' lacrosse, in the state quarterfinal. If they need the lift, I'll be driving up for it. So, uh, 2:00 P.M., should be a great game. We're excited. They match up well against Vestal. I think we're looking good. I just talked to a couple of coaches right after practice today, and kids are excited. Uh, a little warm these last couple days. Got to do some hydration stuff over these next couple days, but we're excited with the kids. A couple of things for you, just to let you know, I'll pass them around so you can take a look. But just hot off the press from the high school, the literary magazines are out. Uh, Mrs. Timido dropped them off to have a couple, so I want to send one out each direction here, so that you can take a look, share them around. And then, because there was a request last year to do it again, here you go. You have, the yearbook is out and done, hot off the presses for the kids. And on the 18th, you will have Ms. Hulan here to come and do a whole presentation about the yearbook this year and what it went and some of the changes that they made. She feels very confident we're going to do very well in, in the competition for yearbooks this year, because some of the changes that they had recommended in, in the yearbook from last year, as well as we did, she thinks we're going to be even better. So I'll, I'll have a copy, an exec, you can kind of pass around, take a look, but you're going to have the kids here in, on the 18th to come and do a presentation about all the things they're doing. And as Mrs. Hulan said, the kids are chomping at the bit for next year's yearbook crew. So we're, we're excited for next year too. So, so I just wanted to share all of that with you, some great things happening at the board being on the 18th, okay?
So you have a big group for the, for the yearbook nowadays?
Got a pretty good group for the yearbook.
That's wonderful, because my daughter graduated in 13. She was a one-person show.
Oh, the other thing I, I do want to quickly note, we are going to recommend running executive session at five o'clock like we did last year at the end, um, uh, for the last meeting, because we have our retiree, um, uh, our gala for the retiree that Mr. Giordina is going to put on. And we had all talked about doing that, where we could be done with the meeting, head out, go enjoy our time with the retirees, and then be done for the evening. So just wanted to put that out there. That's how we're going to look to reorganize for the 18th, like we did last year, do exec session first. That way we can do everything, then come out and enjoy our time with the retirees.
So five for our meeting and six for, five for our exec meeting?
Yes. For the
Six.
Six-thirty for the, for the regular meeting. Leave yourselves enough time, just in case we have anything to talk about, we can do that, okay? All right?
That's the next meeting.
Next meeting, the 18th. Yes.
Oh, you keep, I told me on Wednesday.
When? When's the date?
Any other business for the board?
I have no other business before the board.
I'm going to ask the board for a motion to enter an executive session to discuss employment of histories of particular persons, and may as made example on the federal law for, for the board, make data action after executive session. take action after executive session.
So moved, Kathy Groves. Second, Patty Reynolds.
Motion made and second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carried, everybody have a good evening, and, um.